I want to welcome everybody to the Commissioners meeting. I want to welcome those folks that's on this live streaming. And I want to recognize some folks for the folks that's live streaming as well, some of you folks that are not familiar. To my far right over here is our County Attorney Chuck Frye. To his left, Casey Smith, County Manager. To my far left over here is Master Clerk Debbie Harris. And I assume Jason...
Is locked out.
Jason Martin, Assistant County Manager. And we'll welcome all you folks. Now, Representative of the Townsfolk Area Chamber of Commerce is scheduled to be the Council of Chambers represented at this meeting, but we have not received the 2022 list of representatives. We have been informed by the Chamber President that due to COVID-19, some of the representatives may be watching the live stream to report back to their chamber. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Shores if he'd recognize our veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, Commissioner McClure got this started and we really like it and we're proud of it. But at this point in time, we would like to recognize anyone that's in the audience that may be a veteran. If you're a veteran, would you please stand up?
Amen.
Thank you very much. We also have, we have some county pins. Would you guys mind coming up and let me give you a pin?
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, brother. Thank you for your service.
Good to see you today.
I purposely held off on that. I had some people looking funny at me because I purposely held off on the invocation and pledge of allegiance because I ran across something today that I just want to read a short thing to before invocation. Liberty must at all hazards be supported.
Amen.
We have a right to it derived from our maker. But if we had not, our fathers have earned and bought it for us at the expense of their ease, their estates, their pleasure, and their blood. But a constitution of government once changed from freedom can never be restored. Liberty once lost is lost forever. John Adams.
Amen.
Those who would like to pray with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a free people. We call upon your wisdom, your strength, and your guidance to lead us, Father, and give us the knowledge and the will to follow your leadership. Father throughout history, there've been special people that have been called upon to defend this great nation. Special people that have been called upon to lead this great nation. We call upon you, Father, the God of all wisdom, to give us what we need to lead this county in a direction that would enhance the lives of all our citizens. We give thanks to you, Father. We often complain and we don't praise you enough and we don't thank you enough.
Amen.
And we thank you tonight, Father, and we call upon your leadership for it is in his precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I saw some people looking back and forth. What we've done is we put a flag back there that way we don't have to turn our backs to you guys and we can all look at each other. So that's why we put those flags back there.
Please register if you are interested in speaking at public address. I'd like to excuse Commissioner Watford. I understand Commissioner McClure is on the way. Had a short delay. Okay, so to have a motion, got a motion to excuse?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Shores. Shores with motions, okay.
Or second. Commissioner Trowe, motion.
Okay.
County Manager Smith has requested that closed session be moved to follow public address. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the amended budget? Got a motion from Commissioner Shores, second, but Commissioner Elliott, cast your vote.
It's on the clicker.
Is there anyone registered to speak at public address?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, then we have one person ready.
Okay.
That motion carries five votes, six and a half.
May I have a motion and second going to closed session for matters of attorney-client, personnel, and economic development?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion from Commissioner Shores, second.
Second.
Yeah, second, Commissioner Yates. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay. Going to take the short session for closed session.
May I have motion second to return open session?
Give me just a second, okay, I'm ready.
Okay, may I have motion second to return open session?
May I have motion second.
Okay, all in favors? Okay, Mr. Frye?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the need to make a report to the board with regard to the matters discussed in closed session. I'm still trying to get my notes together. May I defer that until later in the meeting?
Okay, we'll do it right before adjournments.
Thank you, sir.
All right. May I have a motion second to amend the agenda to consider a resolution?
Second.
This will go on as agenda item nine C.
Verbal on that?
Let me see.
The second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want the clickers or?
We can do this one verbally.
Oh, yeah, then.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a vote on that motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, I was adding it over there.
Thank you.
Okay.
You need oral or verbal?
Verbal, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm moving it.
Okay. Any favors?
I guess Craig's coming up.
Project Doug, Mr. Goodson.
No, actually, this will be agenda item nine C.
Are you gonna put all that on nine C?
It'll be nine C.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should've done that on what I gave you.
Okay. And it's already been voted on approved, that as well, okay.
I can't be in the name of the agenda yet.
All right, public hearing. Rezoning request by Christopher B. Sicker, B. Sicker Holdings LLC in Jackson Hill Township containing twenty plus acres from RA two to L one. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. We have, as you stated, one item on tonight for public hearing, and that is a request by Christopher B. Sicker from B. Sicker Holdings LLC to rezon property in Jackson Hill Township, tax map two, lot nineteen, containing twenty acres more or less. Said property is located on the west side of South NC Highway one oh nine, directly south of the John Reed Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA two rural agricultural district to that of LI limited industrial district. Mr. B. Sicker is in the audience tonight, and I think, I don't want to steal his thunder, he wants to construct an industrial manufacturing facility down there. At this time, I would ask him to come up and go over his application if the board so chooses.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Good. So, the property right there, we want to put approximately a forty thousand square foot facility on it, towards the front, up there. Manufacture trailers and tractor attachments. We have a facility eight tenths of a mile down the road already, but are out of land space to add on to that facility. So, we've acquired the land on the street in an effort to build the facility there and stay nearby in the town of Denton. You know, we think there'd be somewhere between twenty-five and forty jobs that would come along with that as we expand into that facility.
You tying on to the Denton sewer system or septic tank first?
Do what?
Sewer system or?
It's gonna be a septic tank there. Our Denton facility has sewer now, we're in the city of Denton, but we have to put septic there.
Septic tank here?
Yes, outside the town of Denton.
So, you are in the city of Denton?
I am, yes, sir. Eight tenths of a mile down the street, which is used to be Yakon Valley Chevrolet, right there, on that property.
Okay.
But as you can tell, we're out of land, you know, to expand right there.
Any other questions for Mr. B. Sicker?
I don't have any.
Thank you, Mr. B. Sicker, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition of the request? You wanna come forward and?
Sir.
If you would, state your name, so.
Bobby Hamilton, I live on the north side of John Reed Road. I'm not protesting the trailer place or nothing like that. I just want to know how it's gonna affect John Reed Road. John Reed Road is not built for traffic, it's just a good driveway.
Mr. B. Sicker's entrance will be off of NC Highway one oh nine. I think he's planning on actually leaving trees along John Reed Road so that he won't access it from that road at all. Shouldn't affect it at all.
Okay.
I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds like y'all gonna be good neighbors already, I like that.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Crook, what is staff recommendation on that?
Um, I did submit staff recommendation in y'all's packet, I, I will not read it verbatim, it basically speaks to the type of business that Mr. B. Sicker wishes to run, I, I got educated on this, there is a difference between skid steer attachments and farm implement attachments, and, and Mr. B. Sicker's found that niche and is, is wanting to expand his facility, anytime we can expand manufacturing jobs, it's a good thing.
Amen.
And, um, it also speaks to one oh nine being one of the major travel corridors, uh, in that part of the county, there is an eight inch water line along NC Highway one oh nine there, while sewer is not, uh, at, at that location, Mr. B. Sicker does not need sewer for his facility, it also speaks to the fact that there are other examples of this type of facility in the Denton area with, um, Laughlin Fabrications and, um, let's see, Kaufman Traders, so this, this kinda blueprint works down there, because Denton doesn't have a large inventory of industrial properties, so this seems to fit the bill fairly well for those folks down there and, um.
South end of the county needs it.
I love it.
Yes, yes, the, um, it als- the, the recommendation also speaks to policies one one, one three, one seven, one eight, four point two, four point three, four point six, and four point seven, all supporting the rezoning request, and staff would recommend approve.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion by the board?
No, sir.
I declare the public hearing closed, may I have a motion second to either approve or deny the rezoning request, and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency. We got a motion by Commissioner Troy.
I make a second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner Yates, cast your vote.
I'll third it.
Wish you the best of luck.
Amen.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, may I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Elliott?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Shores, cast your vote. Congratulations, Craig.
All of the votes are in. And that motion also carries by vote, six, zero.
Okay, items for decision, information, deboration, approval of development agreement for wastewater treatment allocation from Davis County with Davidson Craven LLC, Mr. Frye will lead this off.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in front of you tonight a proposed development agreement for wastewater treatment allocation from Davidson County, between the county and, and Davidson Craven. Uh, David Anavinit, who is the attorney for the applicant, is here tonight, and, uh, David has been here on several occasions, and I'd, I'd ask if he might just sort of summarize the work that we've put in bringing this document together, and the one amendment that needs to be made to the document that's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, I appreciate very much the chance to speak briefly, and thank you, board members, this has been a, a working process for a while, and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to speak, uh, my client Davidson Craven has been working on this particular parcel for some time to, uh, develop it, it's uniquely located at the intersection of Highway sixty-four and eighty-five, and is further bisected by New Bowers Road, so it's kind of a unique property in terms of its access and, um, visibility, uh, it sits in really what we would call the epicenter of a corridor of economic opportunity at that intersection, and one that I believe you all would recall, you've put substantial, uh, infrastructure cost into running, uh, sewer out to this very, uh, intersection to serve that area and the, the, uh, land around it. Uh, last week, your planning board voted unanimously to approve rezoning, uh, to recommend that to you, um, if I may, uh, I do have some information, if it would be helpful to sort of get a picture of what my client is hoping to, uh, have at that area, if I may approach.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, babe.
Very nice.
I do.
Madam Clerk, do you need one?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
Thank you, sir.
As Mr. Frye said, we've been working together on a draft agreement to bring an allocation of twenty thousand gallons per day to this, uh, location, um, we feel this is a, a great addition to what has been, uh, a succession of, um, successes for our county along the Interstate eighty-five corridor at key intersections, uh, this is in keeping with your and the county's longstanding goals of positioning this particular intersection and these corridors, uh, to be developed commercially, and, uh, we certainly would encourage favorable consideration of our request, uh, I have with me this evening my client Jonathan Smith, uh, manager of Davidson Craven, uh, who has worked to develop this, um, plan that you see before you, as well as Craig Goodson, president of Davidson County Economic Development Commission, who's also been a, a great supporter and encourager, uh, of this development for some time now. Uh, one item that, uh, as I mentioned, your planning board had recommended approval of rezoning, but, um, Mr. Frye has made one clarification to the proposed agreement, that your approval tonight is still subject to that rezoning, uh, which will come before you towards the end of this month. If anyone has further questions for Mr. Smith or Mr. Goodson, they are both here also, and have been intimately involved with this project, and can answer other specific questions you may have about the development itself.
Good. What is the, uh, what league, uh? Scott?
What's the status of the zoning, that's already completed?
That's already ready for the agreement, okay. Okay.
Awesome.
Okay, uh, anybody have any question, Mr. Abbott?
Scott, I take it the pump station's right down here, it's a little round, uh, so we'll need that creek there to, uh, get, uh, David Townsend future for sewer?
Yes.
Y'all would oblige us later on, I would hope, for easement across there for sewer to get to, uh, David Townsend.
Yeah, we, we understood that the pump station could be needed for other, you know, area, uh, projects.
But we need to get to the school, so, uh, that's the only way to get there is up that creek there, I mean.
Sorry.
In response to that, is that something we can work out with Mr. Abbott and Mr. Smith?
It, it's something that, uh, council and I have not discussed, it may be appropriate to, when we are making the amendment to this draft, which is in front of you, to also put language in there about that.
Doesn't look like there's any objection to that.
I, I'm not hearing any, so it, it, just to document that, we would put in here a provision that this allocation is contingent upon the rezoning of the property, and that if the agreement is carried out, that there would be an agreement to subsequently provide an easement to that pump station.
And it looks like by y'all's site plan, it's outside of the, anything that the plans for building or parking or anything.
I think it would be, I think that would fall outside of anything to affect what we have planned.
Mr. Chairman, we would be recommending the approval of this agreement sub- uh, subject to those two amendments, which council will work out after this meeting.
Just a small favor, but thank you.
Understand.
Yeah, big, big help, yeah.
It helps the community.
Right.
That's great insight, Todd. Okay, subject to, unless there's anything else, subject to?
Those two amendments.
Those two amendments, uh, does anyone have a motion to support, Mr.?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
To support it?
And second my question.
Chuck's words.
And Chuck's words.
And I second it. Cast your vote. Chuck's words. Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Good luck.
I like this printout too, by the way, something to look at.
I didn't know double tap.
Recovered.
You got the votes too?
I did, there we go.
It hadn't happened to me yet, so I was waiting on it.
I'm losing.
Okay, uh, Mr. Smith, will you? Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Mr. Smith, will you lead off on the, uh, DCA hanger project?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, back in April of last year, this board member, uh, DCAA approached the Davidson County Board Commissioners for an appropriation to build hangars.
Absolutely.
Or actually to take out debt to build hangars, um, since that time, uh, I think they've gone through their due diligence process to look for suitors, if you will, for financing, it's not worked out exactly the way they want, part of it is, I think, just lax inability, have too much competition for people looking for money, um, as you all know, that area over there, and you, I guess we're getting into sewer plans now, it's kind of a nice segue from the last item, that area and that part of the county has got a potential another thousand acres to be developed at some point in time, this airport is situated to the, to where it will be the beneficiary of, of, to be working in that area.
Yeah.
Uh, years, yeah, it's going on two years ago now, we had a large air, corporate airplane in one of the hangars, didn't stay long, but could've, it generated as much as, how much was the tax value of that forty-two million dollar plane?
It was, uh, about, between twenty-five and thirty million dollars, the plane, that was the tax value.
How much tax value, whatever?
That would've generated about a hundred and forty thousand.
So they, we've got the opportunity to lure in large corporate tenants into hangar space in there, so the DCAA folks have approached us with, you know, can you add some more to the one point two million dollars to let us build four large hangar spaces down there, uh, to accommodate basically the future, and so that's the request before you this evening, uh, Commissioner Yates is a member of that board, there's other members of the DCA board here, uh, this evening, um, we'll get into financing in just a few minutes, but I think it's wise to, um, Commissioner Yates, I'll lea- I'll look to you to lead here from here, to kind of talk about the business case of doing this, because again, and we all know, you wanna keep the airport up, and they, they, years ago, when I started here, the airport had, had a hard time, and Carl remembers those days, keeping up funds with what they just generate off leases and ha- uh, off their hangar rentals, funding things like the fuel farm, AWAS upgrades, all those kinds of things, you know, we get state funds for big things like runways, et cetera, but I'm talking about maintaining the area out there, since that time, you know, you guys wrote off some debt for them, helped them get cash in their pockets, um, and these things right here help build things, we, we have no other mechanism to do that, and we could charge them to pay us back, but it's our asset as the county, so we're simply just taking, basically robbing Peter to pay Paul, if you want it.
Mr. Manager, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just compliment, uh, Mr. Yates and your committee, I know when you brought this to us before, I mean, we could see the economic development part of that, and how important it is to add on to this airport, because that is the key to bring, you know, big manufacturers in, but I went out there and I walked it, and I, I talked to the guys who owned the, uh, the mechanic shop, the new mechanic shop where they work on the, the big planes.
Big airplanes?
Yeah, that, that was amazing, and the, uh, the attention to detail, the way that y'all brought them in and made them feel at home, and the compliments that they had to you and the rest of the members of your committee, I just wanna thank all of y'all, because it's an asset to our county, and y'all have done a tremendous job, I saw it with my own eyes and I was blown away, but, uh, if we can add more on like that, then we'd be stupid not to do it, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Chuck, just for, I mean, Casey, just for clarification, whatever we decide tonight is to be moved on for a public hearing?
Yes, sir, and that's.
Okay, so we make the decision this meeting, and then that's moved on a public hearing?
That's gonna be the request in just a moment, I just wanted to get through the business case of it, I'll get to the funding in just a second.
I just wanted sure I wouldn't.
Yeah, no, you're not jumping the gun, you're right on time, I just wanna make sure they don't make any more questions about the concept of, now, 'cause the request before you this evening is to ask for an additional three point eight million to add to what you've already done, total of five.
Absolutely.
What that does is four large corporate hangars and the grading and all the site work.
That's huge.
That means that DCA Airport won't have to dip into their funds, which they need to maintain these, these types of things, moving forward, um, you may be asking yourself, so where's the money gonna come from, well, years ago, we, we had funds in our, in our I eighty-five corporate center project, we, if you, some of the board members, Commissioner Shores and Commissioner Elliott may not have been here when we even did this, but years ago, we entered into a lease arrangement with Edgar when they joined us as a tenant out at the air, I mean, out at the corporate center, that arrangement changed very quickly after they got here, and they bought the property, so we've had funds sitting in that project ordinance for quite some time, with the notion that we would, we would use it to start another development project potentially in the future, the members of that, that corporate center committee, Commissioner Shell, uh, Yates, you, you all know how hard work that has been to develop the industrial park we have now, we've got a lot of irons in the fire with a jail, potential school upgrades and sewer upgrades, I don't see us doing that, eh, at this point in time, taking those funds and starting over again, um, I think probably our mindset is more private development for the land purchases and things, and we help with the sewer, so I'm seeing it as take these funds and put it in another asset that we already have, which is the airport, and this would leave us, still a few hun- few, still leave us some funds left in that project ordinance, uh, to do other things with, but, um, that's the pla- that's the pitch for you this evening, Commissioner, I mean, Chairman Shell is right on time, we can't do the appropriation tonight, if it's, if it pleases the board to move forward with this, we would respectfully ask the board to call for a public hearing because, because of the law you have in front of you here, uh, that even got amended in twenty nineteen, if we're doing something related to economic development that's related to real property and advancing the tax base, I'd call for a public hearing before we can make the actual appropriation, so we'll run it in the, we'll run the ad in the paper, and we'll be back the first meeting in February to finish this off, but I didn't wanna no- I didn't wanna postpone it, I just wanted to do the business case of it this evening.
One question, it's on the hanger, are they all rental or, or leased, you don't ever sell them, do you?
Um, no, there's not been an instance out there that I know of, no, um, we've usually gone into a situation where the airport is paying us back debt, that's how, that's how it started years ago, they paid us back debt service for building.
No, no, I mean, an individual with a plane, he, he wouldn't buy a hanger, he would lease or rent a hanger.
Lease the hanger.
Correct, these, correct, yes, okay.
I call, uh, Commissioner Yates, you got a message sitting on that board?
Well, I do, and I wanted to, Commissioner Elliott said something a while ago, these guys out here, there's the airport authority, they're the ones that put in the hard work for the years and years, and they've really been scraping the bottom trying to get by, and, uh, you know, was not able to do anything, and I don't know if our chairman would like to speak, or, or, uh.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Please do.
Please.
But, you know, it's been a long time since there's been any money spent over there at this airport, and it brings in a lot of money, people don't realize, and, uh, somebody was telling me about somebody looking the other day to bring another charter business here, and charter don't necessarily mean they got three jet aircrafts, it don't mean they gonna be toting people back and forth, charter jets, I was telling Commissioner Shores, charter jets is, uh, paid to deliver parts for a factory or a plant that's broke down, I mean, you know, you think, when you think charter, uh, system, you're thinking about it's moving people, sometimes they move parts, this plant's gotta be up and running in the morning, so they'll fly this plane to the Midwest or wherever they got to and pick up a part, so, but anyhow, Mr. Chairman, then.
Revenue could, revenue production is certainly limited to the amount of what you got to offer.
It is, it is, we think it is, thank you for allowing me to speak, um, I'm John Gray, I'm chairman of the, uh, the County Airport Authority, um, uh, we're grateful to be able to speak with you tonight, and, um, uh, to talk a little bit about, uh, what it would mean to expand, uh, the economic development opportunities that exist out at the airport, um, we're, um, at a point that we believe we can be, uh, more of an actor in terms of pursuing, uh, jobs and, um, uh, county investment, as far as the, uh, airport is concerned, um, I, I do wanna say very briefly how much we appreciate, uh, this board's past support, uh, at the airport, uh, you have a lot of things that you can give money to, day in and day out, and, um, we would like to be in more of a position, uh, where we can make our own way, and to ask for less, and to be able to give more, that's our goal as an authority, um, I also want to thank you for allowing your staff, your manager, your attorney, uh, your clerk, your assistant county manager, uh, Jane Kiker, your finance director, all of these folks play key roles in the day-to-day work of the airport authority, and we appreciate you allowing them to participate in that way, um, your continued support has allowed us to keep, um, up to date on, uh, our aviation services, whether it's the services themselves, it's the equipment, it's facilities, uh, it's the, um, services to the pilots. the, um, services to the pilots and the planes that come into our airport day in and day out. Um, you know, because of your support, we've had, we, we constantly have some improvements. Not every year, but just in this past year, uh, we had the Mauser Navigation System, which pilots just swear by. This is what gets them out, in and out safely under bad conditions. And coming up in twenty twenty-two, that just came out, uh, was finished in, I believe it was in June of this past year, went online. Coming in this, in twenty twenty-two is a complete reconstruction of our airfield, a pavement area and it's, it's in fairly bad shape. It's over twenty years old and that's a little beyond, uh, when they say that it should be, uh, improved, so that's something to look forward to.
It gonna be a thicker.
Yes, it will be.
Any chance you're going to extend it out?
Uh, and, and no, I think, I mean, turn around and look at the experts back here. I think we're as far as we can go right now.
Not to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a second. In speaking with Commissioner Yates the other day, first off, I'm a big proponent of, of the airport. I would love to see our airport grow, uh, and be like a regional airport, you know, um, like the one in Concord. And I was talking to Commissioner Yates about that, but, uh, I don't think, because I know I didn't, I don't think a lot of the people in Davidson County just understand exactly what all is done out there, like the charter flights. Uh, I didn't know that. Uh, you know, my wife and I just relocated out to, to High Rock Lake and what's nice to know is, is I have the ability to go right around the corner, charter a plane five minutes from my house and go somewhere.
Hmm.
Uh, and I, I just, I didn't know that. I'm sure there's lots and lots of county residents that, that don't understand that and I appreciate you guys and I appreciate what y'all put together. Um, I, I reiterate a lot of what Commissioner, uh, Elliott said, but, but I do appreciate it and I, I think that having that airport there and having, um, the ability to get businesses in and out of here, uh, bring bigger businesses, I know, I'm sure, it's a huge plus when Craig goes to do his, uh, talking to people about ADC stuff.
Absolutely.
The fact that, that, that airfield is there. So I appreciate you guys, I appreciate the work that y'all do and, uh, I, I just, I hope that we, uh, Mr. Chairman, I hope that we continue to, to further this program.
Man. Thank you.
Listen, John, you got any, anybody else?
Mr. McClure, yeah.
Come a long way since Joe's Airport.
Do you?
When I became a commissioner, that's what we had.
Yeah.
And, uh, Joe's Airport.
Joe's Airport.
It is, y'all have just done a tremendous job, you've used the money wisely that we've given you and, uh, we've got a Class A facility and we'll continue to improve upon that. Um, I can't see any board, any member of any board, future or now, that would object to putting hangars out there, it's going to get a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, thanks.
Amen.
That's right.
Because that takes the pressure off residential folks.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to say one word about the, the insight of the money that you received for Edgar out there and putting that money aside for future use. Good job, Casey.
Brilliant, amen. Good job. I've been known to be stingy.
[laughing].
And very conservative, so, I mean, I, I, we think ahead because we knew, we, I don't know how we all knew, those, you, a member of this Corporate Center Committee knew this area, and I'm using my hands, that area over there is going to be something.
Yeah, yeah.
And this airport is getting ahead of that curve now, so.
Yeah.
It's just a plan, you just knew.
All the parts have to move.
Right, all the parts have to move.
I know, I'd say Casey sees the future, he, he somewhat sees the future too and we just discussed something a few minutes ago, Craig, and he's a forty billion dollar chip company, not million, a forty billion dollar chip company looking just a few counties away, you know, so even though that's a few counties away, they gotta have supplies, you know? And, uh, so anyhow, uh, thank you again, Casey, because you could be sitting there going, well, you know, I think we can put our money somewhere else. We do try to fund our schools properly.
That's right.
Maintenance of them, construction of them, we do what we can. We can't spend every dime we got on one particular thing. We gotta kind of.
That's right.
Try to balance it out and I think this is a good balance, that money comes back. Um, so I personally think it's a good investment too.
Yeah, I'm.
And before I read it on the internet that, uh, they're going to pave the new track, I mean, the runway, that's not me. I'm not going to bid the, bid the paving business out there on the runway, so let's clarify that right now.
Edgar, have a motion to move this to the, February the fourteenth, it was it? Yeah, February the fourteenth, uh, for public hearing.
Second.
Make that motion?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. McClure.
Cast your vote. Hey. Congratulations, gentlemen, thank you.
Being how.
John, you look like you're ready for a long speech, you've got something else you want to say.
He's ready, he's ready to go. The sale's been made, I'm.
Sounds good, my friend, sounds good. Let, let me ask you a question. Bama or Bulldogs tonight?
Bulldogs.
Okay, there we go. [laughing]. Okay, uh, I'm gonna call on, I'm sorry.
Commissioners McClure and Commissioner Yates, I need your votes.
Sorry for the delay tonight.
McClure and Yates need your vote.
McClure and Yates, they need your vote.
I did everything.
Thank you.
Not your vote.
See, buddy. Yes, sir.
Casey, being how that public hearing is on February the fourteenth and that's my birthday, can you put a little bit more extra in there?
Oh, wow. I think it's Valentine's Day.
All they want.
Yeah. Okay, votes in, February the sixth.
And that motion carried by vote six, we read.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Chuck, go back to you on closed session.
Well, no, we need to, you, you've amended the agenda to talk about project stuff, to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I put that in the wrong, I put that in the wrong section of the agenda.
Yeah, let me find that.
Project Rubber Duck. Nine C Duck, is that what we're doing? Nine C Duck.
I, I think Mr. Goodson made.
Okay, Mr. Goodson, if you'll elaborate on Project Duck.
Is that Quack Quack or?
Quack Quack.
She like death for it?
Oh, tee, tee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Project Duck is a manufacturing facility, uh, located just outside of Thomasville. Um, they are seeking to do an expansion that'll be about sixty thousand square feet, add twenty-five jobs and, uh, for a little over four million dollars in capital investment. Um, we are seeking a building reuse grant from North Carolina Commerce, the Rural Division to, uh, pay for, uh, part of that cost and the government, governor is, um, is looking at, um, other, um, funding measures that would assist this project, um, to locate. So today, we're just, the only thing we're doing is asking for approval of a resolution so we can move forward with the building reuse grant.
Thank you, Craig. Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion approved.
Get a second.
This verbally, sir?
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, Chuck, now, am I, am I ready, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we set a date for the public hearing on that as well?
Okay.
Because that won't require the same thing as the previous one.
February fourteenth?
That'll be fine.
Is that date all right?
All right. That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to get my notes together and to make a report back to the board with regard to matters discussed in closed session. There were numerous matters. Uh, the first was with personnel and with the personnel matter, the board gave instructions to the county manager with regard to hiring of a department head. The second was with regard to economic development and the board directed that the agenda be amended for consideration of Project Duck, as was just presented by Mr. Goodson. And then under attorney-client, there were three matters that were considered and as is required by law, I would report to the board that in the matter pending before the federal district court for the middle district of North Carolina and that action entitled the state of John Mark Hendrick through his appointed administrator Donna K Kaiser versus Barry Lee Bartrug and Matthew Jacob Shelton, there was, uh, information provided with regard to a settlement, a report of settlement will be provided to the clerk for inclusion within the minutes of this meeting. With regard to a second matter, uh, for a matter pending before the North Carolina